Just let me know, Chris, when you're ready. Okay. All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Middlesex County Council Meeting of Tuesday, September 27th at 1:00 P. M. And I'd like you to, I'd like to welcome you, and I'm going to call this meeting to order, and I'm just going to provide some remarks. The theme for this year's Truth and Reconciliation Week is remembering the children. We memorialize the children lost to the residential school system and honor survivors and their families. Learning and commemorating the truth of our history from First Nations, Métis, and Inuit knowledge keepers is an important part of the path to reconciliation. Middlesex County remains committed to truth and reconciliation, and this week provides an opportunity for the county to continue our journey in support of the reconciliation process. In recognition and support of the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation, the county has purchased orange ribbon lapel pins for staff and council. From each orange ribbon lapel pin, $1.25 goes to programs and organizations designed to help support survivors from residential schools. We are also working with Ladders to Kindness, an Indigenous team that will be presenting a Truth and Reconciliation presentation to staff on October 5th. It will be encouraging staff to participate in Orange Shirt Day this coming Friday. We also have a video that we are sharing on our website and social media to commemorate the day, and we invite you to all watch that now. September 30th is the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. This day commemorates the children who never returned home and survivors of residential school system, as well as their families and communities. We acknowledge the land in which we gather is the traditional territory of the Atawaran, the Anishna Bay, the Haudenosaunee, and Lenapeqoq peoples with a longstanding relationship to the land, water, and region of southwestern Ontario. The local First Nation communities of this area include Chippewas of the Thames First Nation, Anida Nation of the Thames First Nation, and the Monsey Delaware Nation. This week is an opportunity to listen and learn from Indigenous people, including survivors, elders, artists, and leaders from across the country. Reconciliation is a human-centered approach and takes time and commitment. We know that reconciliation is a perpetual journey. The time is now for us to be unified in reflection and acknowledge the resilience, dignity, and strength of survivors, and to remember children that never came home. Indigenous and municipal partners need to spend time together to build the baseline of understanding in our communities. Public commemoration is a vital part of the reconciliation process in Canada, and we encourage everyone to take time on this day and all days to better understand the history of our country and to participate in programs created and led by our First Nations, Métis, and Inuit organizers. At Middlesex County, we acknowledge the historic and ongoing injustices that Indigenous people endure in Canada, and we affirm our commitment to honoring Indigenous voices, nations, and cultures. We will move forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect. Together, we can deepen our collective awareness and use our voices to ensure municipal policies do not marginalize and help to build a more equitable society. Okay, and I'd like to thank Marcy and Paul and Rebecca for their assistance with that video. It turned out very well. I'm now going to ask if you have any disclosures that are pecuniary interest in general nature thereof. Seeing none, business arising from the minutes. Okay, then I'm going to ask that the minutes, the August 30th, 2022 Meeting of County Council be approved and then, of course, be adopted. Any questions or concerns about those minutes? Not, I'm looking for a mover. Councillor Vanderheiden, seconded by Councillor Richards, all in favor? So moved. Any deputations? Okay, inquiries, notices of motion? No, reports? Nope. Uh, new business, and that was something that Neil was going to do, but he's unable to. Do we have Adam here, or is he coming in later?
I think closer to the end of the meeting, Neil or Adam will be here.
I don't think anybody heard you.
Closer to the end of the meeting, Neil or Adam will be here.
Okay, so we'll go, we'll circle back to that. Uh, councillor's comments and other business. So I've got, um, councillor Vanderheiden, did you have any hand up? Okay, and then councillor Elliot?
If I could, thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you for that video. That was amazing. Um, I received an email today, and I just wanted to remind everybody, I'm not sure who received it, was from the Federation of, uh, Middlesex Federation of Agriculture, and it's regarding a, um, module or a Zoom meeting that's going, no, it's not even Zoom, sorry. It's going to be held at Fire Rock Golf Course in Camoka. The afternoon and evening sessions are on Wednesday, September 28th, and it's, it's to give all candidates in, in this coming up election information that you may need from the Federation of Agriculture, so you can get that piece of our agricultural community in your minds and, and find out what, what they're looking for to, to, um, have as issues and as, as solutions to the things that we all come up against. So I will send that to Marcy, um, if that's okay, and then she can share it with everyone else, but I just thought I would share that because it's good for us to keep in mind what our agricultural community is, is thinking as well during this election. Thank you.
And thank you for bringing that forward, and I am pleased to speak at that tomorrow. I'll be speaking at the three o'clock session and the evening session as well. So if you want to just come and visit, that would be great, too. And now councillor Elliot.
Uh, thank you, and through you worship yesterday, uh, was exciting as we had Minister Stephen Leche, the Minister of Education, uh, in Thames Centre in Dorchester at the River Heights daycare at the construction of the site. Uh, as a reminder, that's bringing in 88 new full-day licensed childcare spots at River Heights uh, public school, and that's a collaborative project with the Ministry of Education, the Thames Valley District School Board, uh, Thames Centre, as well as Middlesex County. Uh, we had some great conversations with Minister Leche about, uh, education and childcare topics uh, in Middlesex County, and he specifically mentioned, uh, the work that, uh, the Women's Caucus has done, that he knows very much that we are lacking in childcare services in Middlesex County, and that will remain a priority for him to bring more childcare spaces, uh, as well as he acknowledged and confirmed that the moratorium on school closures will remain, um, until uh, a, a full review of the PAR process is done and did acknowledge that, uh, rural schools will need, uh, special considerations in that part, our, uh, process, and so that was all great news coming out of yesterday meeting with him.
Great, thank you, and thanks for being there on the scene for that. Okay, and now we're moving on to bylaws, and I think that we're just readjusting this a little bit. 10A and 10B are going to be at a later meeting. Okay, and maybe, um, our county engineer, do you want to address this for council, please?
Yeah, thank you, Madam, where I'll be brief, just found some minor technical issues with some of the wording in the bylaws. Nothing that's going to change any of the functionality of, of the, the two bylaws, but just something we staff would just need a little bit more time to get revised so they can get passed without having to be amended at a later meeting.
Thank you. Do we need a, um, a motion to do that, to defer them? Okay, so can somebody please make that motion? Thank you, councillor Mayhew, seconded by councillor Elliot, all in favor? So moved, and now moving on to the next bylaw, uh, which would be 10C. And can you confirm what number you would like that to be?
We can leave it at 7195.
You can, okay, 7195, which is a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the September 27th, 2022 Meeting of County Council. So for first and second reading, can I have a, ah, thank you, councillor David. Thank you, uh, seconded by councillor Burkhart-Jackson, all in favor? And now our third reading moved by councillor Smith and seconded by councillor Elliot, all in favor? So moved, and now we're moving into the committee as a whole, so it's now, uh, 111. And I would like a mover for this, please. Councillor Vanderheiden, seconded by councillor Brennan, all in favor? So moved. All right, so we have no delegations or reports of county officers? Okay, and now moving to 11B, 11B1, Collection and Use of Electronic Monitoring Information, the I T S policy 10.1, and I'm looking to our Director of I T, Chris Bailey, for this report.
Thank you, Warden, um, through you to council as part of the Government of Ontario's Bill 88, the Working for Workers Act 2022, uh, which amended the Ontario Employment Standards Act. There is a new requirement for employers with 25 or more employees in Ontario to prepare a written electronic monitoring policy. Uh, as the requirements for this policy will soon come into effect, uh, it is important that employees are also advised of county practices relating to the collection and the use of the information that is gathered as part of that new policy. Uh, electronic monitoring is an essential part of ensuring compliance with county policies, maintaining the security and integrity of county information systems, and ensuring information technology services assets are used safely and appropriately. The county does use various electronic monitoring methods for data collection generated by its employees, contractors, and visitors, uh, and these are outlined in H R Policy 1.17, Electronic Monitoring. Uh, electronic monitoring data may be used for auditing and compliance, analytics, information technology, information, infrastructure, security, troubleshooting, and in certain circumstances, employee performance and disciplinary action. Uh, the proposed policy sets out the guidelines and procedures surrounding the collection and the use of electronic monitoring information, privacy and confidentiality, as well as retention of electronic monitoring records. Uh, there are no financial implications as part of this proposed policy. The recommendation today is that the collection and use of electronic monitoring information policy be approved and that the corporate administrative policy and procedures manual be updated, uh, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I see a hand up already, councillor Vanderheiden, go ahead.
Thank you through the warden. Um, I, I, I know this is one of those things that we have to get put together, and I think the policy looks pretty straightforward. Um, how are we going to deal with education for, for people like us that are around the table to see, you know, what is allowed, what isn't allowed? I think intuitively, we know most of that, but is there, is there somewhere that we need to know if there's a, something that the county absolutely refuses for us to go to? That, that kind of thing, like, I mean, um, there, there's so many things out there right now, and I just don't want to, any of us to get into an issue where we, first of all, we already know we don't want to put anybody, any of our systems in, in, in jeopardy, and we know what, what not to link on and what not to link on. Um, but there's just so much here, and it's all so new, and you're the, you're the guru at this, and we are not, so, uh, that, that's my question.
Um, thank you through the warden to the councillor. Um, many of the other policies that are referenced in the electronic monitoring policy do cover off a lot of that information. Um, something I've discussed with Bill as well is a quarterly cybersecurity update, which is something I'm planning on implementing in the next few months, uh, to be provided to council, um, notifying you of, you know, new trends, new threats, and things like that, as well as just reporting on the general security of the county infrastructure and networks.
Any other questions? Councillor Rob?
Thank you through the warden. It's much on the same as what councillor Vanderheiden had said, but, uh, explain a little better to me. I'm, I'm still a little confused. I read through it twice. And it's, you're monitoring this, are you storing all of this information, or you just monitor it, and then it's, it's going, or what is the, uh, the actual process that you're going, are you, are you hiring somebody to do this monitoring, or? Like, I'm just a little more of the physical aspect of it.
Absolutely, through the warden to the councillor. Um, the provincial guidelines lines call it an electronic monitoring policy. Unfortunately, that is not the best wording, in my opinion. Um, we don't have a member of our I T team monitoring this as things are coming in. The information is stored and retained based off of our retention bylaw. Um, so a good example would be emails sent and received. You know, we don't have a member of the I T team watching your inboxes, watching your cell phones, watching your internet activity. All of that information is stored and logged and available to review at a future date if required, for, you know, various reasons that are outlined in the policy. Um, but it, I want to go as far as saying it's passive monitoring. So the information is coming in, we're saving that information, it is available to review in the future if required, but we don't have a member of the I T team monitoring this actively, if, if that, uh, clears it up a little bit for you.
Yeah, it does, thank you.
And I just, just maybe, uh, just before we go, uh, Chris, I know that you'll be, you know, working through this policy with everybody, but, um, Jessica, did you have any comments about the policy, but to help us work through this question that we've been having?
Um, no, I, I think that Chris has covered it all, but it is basically putting what we're doing in practice on paper. It is a requirement under the Employment Standards Act that we do have this policy. We do have to answer how and in what circumstances we are monitoring employees and the purpose of doing so, uh, but Chris has covered off the gen, the general purpose there of what we're doing.
Okay, councillor Vanderheiden?
Yes, through you, um, this goes back to from our councillor's me, uh, question. Um, I cannot think of an example of where I personally would have had an email that I've sent or done anything with that I would have a problem with the public knowing, but it gives me a little bit of pause for thought when it's privacy. Where does our privacy come into play? Because if you're going to be collecting all this information and storing it, at what time can the public with a Freedom of Information, um, request come and get anyone that I've actually ever spoken to on email, which if it's on my phone and my computer, that's how I do my, my, my work and my personal life. So how do I separate the two? Do I have to have all my units just for the county there? And then all my units for home on something totally, like, I'm just getting, getting this sense of, of, um, wow, uh, we have no pri, we already don't have any privacy, but with collecting all of this and saving it, I'm getting a little weary of what could possibly be a reason why a person would want to go in and find all of that.
Okay, I think CEO Rayburn, you'd want to throw some light on this, please?
Yes, thank you. Um, so let's back up a little bit, and I'll get to the answer to your specific questions, Ryan, because I think that is, has so many different parts to it, the question you asked. Um, that there's things I'm going to want Marcy to comment on, and things I'm going to want Jess to comment on, too. But, um, just generally, this has been a great thing. This policy's been a great thing from my perspective, because it allowed, uh, Marcy, Jessica, and Bailey and I to sit down and figure out what are we actually collecting? Because you would not believe the volume of information we were collecting, like, it's big in every one of our 36 different service areas. We're collecting a lot of information, right, Chris, and, and right, Jess, like? And then that led to, one, do we need to do that? And these are kind of questions you're asking. One, do we need to collect that information, and what purpose did we have for it? And then how is it being stored, and how are we telling people that we're collecting it? So the first thing that's happened here with this policy is we've shrunk down to the bare minimum of what it is we need to collect, because instead of this sort of scattered approach, so let's just collect everything and then see what happens. We're down now to the bare necessities, I would say. We've really tightened up our controls of what it is we collect. So that's stage one. Stage two is, how do we control access to that? Because there's all kinds of different examples. I'm going to go away from your personal example, and I'll get back to your personal example, though. But from an employee's perspective, we have guarantees to our union that we're not going to use certain types of information, like video recordings to, for discipline. Um, there are times whenever we do have to go into, um, an email for an investigation. How, what, how do the rules work along that? How do the rules work? So from the employer to the employee perspective, there's all kinds of things that we had to review to make sure we're on the right side. And that was basically all Jessica's department and making sure that we have all the policies and procedures right there. What are the controls, um, to make sure that there's a hierarchy for when we do need to go into this information, access it for certain purposes? And ultimately, the buck stops with me in terms of how we use that information. Um, it, it all flows through me now of, okay, if we're going to do an investigation of some side, some kind that's employee-related, I have to approve it, we have to know the bounds of it, and that's the way the policy is now shaped. It wasn't always that way, but now it's really tight. So I want to give you the sense that what we've done is really tightened everything up, and then I'm going to get to your question about privacy, because I have the same concern. I, I think all of us use our email, whether it be corporate or personal, with a, you know, a mix of all of this stuff, all jumbled together. That gets into a completely different question that's actually outside this policy. That's actually a Freedom of Information question you're asking, which is a great question, and it does relate to this. But I think, Marcy, you should explain how AMPFIPPA works related to, um, personal versus business, even if it's mixed within the emails of your corporate.
Sure, um, so AMPFIPPA, anything that would come in as an AMPFIPPA request, we'd have to run through the paces of the legislation, and within that, there's exemptions for personal information. Um, and that's, so if there's a, in an email with your personal information, that would get redacted or completely withheld. Um, it's just a matter of what meets that definition, um, but it would always be run through its paces on every request.
Warden, um, we needed a, a way to have a single gatekeeper on making sure that in each example, there's a single throat to choke about information being used in the wrong way. And so in the case of AMPFIPPA, that's Marcy. So the question you're asking, Joanne, is really a Marcy. Marcy's in full control of what information goes out, based upon it. As she said, if it's personal, it's not going out, there's an exemption there. I'm in control of everything else in the organization about how that information's used, and I need, so if, if a department head comes to me and say, I need access to any piece of information, my first question is why? Second question is, how, how can the scope be as limited as possible? Because that's the bias we have, is how can the scope be as limited as possible? And then I'm the one that has to watch to make sure that that happens. It's not Chris's department anymore, and it's not Jessica's department, it's my department with you, I guess, Jess, right? We're the sort of two sole arbitrators of that, so much tighter than it was before, because I said to the warden when the policy was first on her desk, I said, you know, we've had electronic monitoring grow so much over the last, what, 10 years? Like, there was not video cameras everywhere 10 years ago. I remember when Wayne first put the policy in about cameras in the parking lot, and I was like, oh, we really need to think about what we're doing with this information. And that was 10 years ago, and since that time, there's cameras everywhere in every one of our departments, there's tracking mechanisms everywhere, there's GPS, there's, you would not believe the amount of information that we discovered we were collecting, and now they all have a policy that guides it. So I'm extremely pleased we're here, because it's one of those things that I would have not wanted to say, oops, I can't believe we're collecting that, you know, just for not knowing. So it was a great, great exercise. I hope that helps, Joanne, in terms of understanding what we're trying to do.
Okay, any other questions? Yep, councillor Rob?
Thank you through the warden, uh, just to what you're saying, Bill. Um, I guess I wasn't thinking about myself or about council so much as I was some of our departments. And, uh, there's some very private conversations go on, I'm sure, between at Strathmere Lodge, between, uh, Brent probably and families. That is very private information, also in social services, I think there's a lot of private information that happens, and that's why I guess where I'm, was really, I should have, uh, clarified that better. It isn't really about, like, us sitting here at council. There is still some concerns that way, but it is really to those, uh, social services and Strathmere Lodge, those type of situations where very private conversations.
Agreed, and the good news is, nothing's changed in terms, like, AMPFIPPA handles all that. So AMPFIPPA's been around for a while, well, well, uh, trodden, uh, path. So everything you're asking about is well-controlled through Marcy's department about what information gets out if there's an AMPFIPPA request. Really, this is about, this policy has less to do with AMPFIPPA and more about making sure everyone knows exactly what we're collecting, because I'm being really upfront with you, we weren't transparent with everybody, because we didn't even, like, think about it before. Everything we're collecting, because you don't, until you sit down and think about the volume you're collecting, you don't really have the opportunity. And so now every employee knows what we're collecting, what we're tracking. Every, um, council know, council member knows, it's very transparent now, and you can make decisions based upon that. And the rules around AMPFIPPA, we're going to do more about that in orientation. Um, but I'm really comfortable with AMPFIPPA helping to guide every question like you've asked, because I've seen it in action. Marcy, it's not, not like we haven't had lots of tests of AMPFIPPA to make sure that it works for the kind of situations Brian's, Brian's talking about, but we have. So I feel really comfortable with the whole thing, because this is the most transparent you can possibly be, which was the goal of the government, I think, in putting this forward.
I would just add to that, too, about the retention piece, and that's something, um, you know, we're, I'm going to be bringing an updated retention policy just because it's, it's time to update, but it's another thing, we're not keeping this forever. And there's certain periods that we have to retain certain information for, but then it will be destroyed in accordance with our policies. So I think that's an important piece to remember as well.
Yeah, that's a good point, Warden, because there's another thing that we just hadn't thought a lot about. It's amazing the things you don't think about till you're challenged by a piece of legislation like this. But when it's electronic information, it's, it doesn't feel the same as a paper document that piles up in your, in Marcy's office about, okay, now it's time to get rid of this. And some of this stuff, we do need to, to get rid of, and it's a really good opportunity to look at that, too. So this was a great exercise. I think the four of us that were mostly involved in this are really, really happy with the exercise that we went through, because now we don't have as, we, we shouldn't have questions from employees about these things, and we shouldn't have too many concerns, I think, going forward. And, and I think, oh, oh, sorry, there's one other thing. I think you said barely about the passive, um, the comment about passive, and I don't know if you want to comment more about that or not, but just explain that difference, because I'm not sure that nuance was really captured here.
Absolutely, um, the, the big thing, you know, and I think, Brian, you had mentioned to councillor Rob, excuse me, uh, earlier that, you know, you're, you're thinking there's a member of the I T team sitting there at a monitor all day, just watching emails come through and watching people's web traffic and watching what people are doing, tracking cell phones, tracking their GPS in their trucks. Uh, none of that is correct. We, we don't actively monitor the data coming through, but we do have to take in the data and retain the data in order to protect the network. That's, and cybersecurity is definitely the most important. Um, but also records retention, a, as Marcy mentioned. Um, you know, if we get an AMPFIPPA request, we have to retain email records of things that come in and out of the organization. So I, I would definitely think cybersecurity is for sure the most important piece here. But yes, definitely passive monitoring, this information does come in, it does get logged, it does get stored, and we can review it at a later date, but there's no one on the I T team right now watching these things as they come through. Um, not only would it be just way too much for even a team of 100 people to do, because there's so much data coming through, it's just not something that's practical, and there's no reason to actively monitor that information.
And the other thing that's really important, too, is you have to put yourself in our shoes, and we do get an AMPFIPPA request. If someone says, can you find anything with the keyword of X all the way through, or, you know, X in your organization? If we're keeping information way too long, that could date back to when I started here. Like, when I got here, it was the first computer, I think, that we had in the organization. So that's, I don't know, I don't even want to say how many years ago, but if they ask that question now, in theory, we would be going back that far. And that's just unfair to us to even ask us to do that. So part of it is also making our job easier of, you know, if we tighten up what we have, then that's that much less searching we have to do. Well, well, at the same time, making sure we have exactly what we need from a corporate history perspective. So it's a fine balance, but this is, I don't know how long we've been working on this, Jess, like five months, four months, something like that?
I would say a good solid three months. Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts to it, um, but it doesn't create any new privacy rights, and it doesn't say that we're not allowed to monitor. We just have to be very transparent about what we are monitoring. Um, so I'm glad we went through the exercise, because it did, you know, bring a lot of things to light, um, so.
Still have land ambulance, uh, as well, right? So that's going to be something you're going to see, because there's a whole bunch of other additional considerations there. I would say, guys, that are a little, so what are you doing that face for? What does that mean? Like, there are other considerations there for land ambulance, right?
Yes, but I don't think, um, Neil's bringing the policy to council.
Oh, okay, that's what that face was for. I didn't know what that face was for. I'm like, yes, sir. Councillor, I got to start learning what the face means, that.
Councillor Vanderheiden, did you have a question?
It's come, it's going to go, sorry, just to finish that point, it's going to go to the M L A, M, uh, what is it, Kathy? M L E M F, what? Am I the chair of that? It's going to the Authority Board instead of the council. Okay.
No problem, um, just one, one other comment, I guess, um. I'm just listening to what's all happening here, and I, I think about roads. I mean, roads are so important, and I re, I remember when we were putting GPS units on our, our trucks, et cetera, and a lot of that had to do with insurances and accidents and being able to prove that we were where we said we were going to be. So, um, with that thought process in mind, which is, is excellent, because in, in, in the old days, we used to write it in a logbook, and if you didn't write it down, and then suddenly something happened, you couldn't rewrite it. You, you were, you were, you were just not there, even though you were there. So this, this is a much, a better way of recording. So this, this is a much, a better way of recording. Can you separate all those modules out per department? Or does it all just kind of like go into one file and you, you dig from there?
Maybe just come on everything but, but ambulance. And then we'll talk about ambulance after that.
Yep, uh, through the warden to the counselor. Um, so I'll use Fleet GPS as, as a, an example, because that's what you mentioned. Um, so that's a completely separate system. It does track things to ensure minimum maintenance standards for Chris and his team. Um, and then in terms of other information, I'll use firewall logging as an example. So anytime anyone goes out to the internet and then the information comes back, that is all in one location. However, you, we are able to filter that information down by specific user if required, or by department, or by physical location as well, based off of the internet address of the building. So show me everyone who went to Facebook from the county building on this date, just as an example. So it is very filterable, and we can do it by individual, by department, or by physical location, as well as by application, uh, such as fleet monitoring.
Now, and, and the other thing that comes up, Warden, is in the ambulance world, I said, it's, it's very much not the same as some of our other services, because uh, we are trying to figure out, and I don't think we've resolved it completely yet, what we do whenever a lot of our tracking information comes from a third party. How do we report that? And how are we transparent about something that somebody else is collecting? Because of course dispatch is the one that is collecting a lot of that information, Joanne, you know, and the ambulances and the times and all that. And so how do we incorporate them into a policy of ours? Even though that's third party information, and even though it, we want to be able to tell our employees transparently, this is the information we're collect, that is being collected, even though it's not us collecting it. So there are some nuances to this legislation that probably haven't been figured out yet. We're going to be I'm going to be at the authority board, be talking about erring on the side of caution and, and trying to uh, get that information to our employees, even though we're not collecting it. But uh, there's another example of where GPS and tracking information is, is being collected. And, and probably more so in land ambulance, Joanne, than in any other service we have.
So basically, Chris, all I want to know is if I go off into a snowbank on a lonely road, you'll be able to find me, right?
Unfortunately, that would be active monitoring, but if someone asks me to look for you, yes, we could find you.
All right, then. It depends which car you use. We've got a tracker and only one of you.
All right. So any other questions? Okay, so uh, we have a motion that the collection and use of electronic monitoring information policy be approved and corporate administrative policy and procedure manual be updated. So looking for a mover, Counselor Rob, seconded by Counselor DeVet, all in favor? So moved. Now we're into eleven B two, electronic monitoring policy, HR policy, one point one seven, and Jessica, whenever you're ready.
I think we mainly just covered the policies, so the, the recommendation before you is to approve the policy as drafted and, and again amend the corporate policy handbook.
Okay, any other questions for Jessica? If not, we've got the motion that the electronic monitoring policy, HR policy be one one seven be approved, and the corporate administrative policy and procedure manual be updated. Mover? Counselor Mayhew, seconded by Counselor Elliott, all in favor? So moved. And now we're moving on to eleven B three, police record checks and drivers abstract policy. Jessica, you can give us a new topic now.
Uh, thank you, Warden. So on April 11, 2022, the Fixing Long Term Care Act was proclaimed into force to regulate Ontario's long-term care home uh, sector and replaces the Long Term Care Homes Act. Uh, the Fixing Long Term um, Care Act sets out enhanced employment screening measures by requiring uh, clean police record checks and ongoing declarations for all employees, volunteers, and members of the Licensees Committee of Management, which is council. Um, as part of the ongoing declarations, individuals who at any time are charged with or convicted of a criminal offense must immediately report any of these charges or convictions to the employer to discuss the conviction and any possible impact on their employment. So with that, CEO Bill Rayburn, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the police record check and drivers abstract policy for Strathmere Lodge.
Just one, go ahead. Marcy and I probably just want to make sure that it's clearly understood that there was a piece of legislation some time ago where you were required to put in place a board of management for long-term care. And uh, in the new procedural buyer law, that's going to be for the next council. So you've been acting as the board of management for this, for Strathmere Lodge, but we're going to make it crystal clear that council is the board of management in the new procedural buyer law, because I don't think it was as crystal clear as we would have wanted it in the past. So that's why you're hearing what Jessica just heard is because you are the board of management for Strathmere Lodge, and it's part of our committee of whole responsibilities to have those discussions. And so that's why each of you are going to be affected by this uh, requirement. Um, I don't know, Jess, I might have missed the part about the dichotomy between being on count, are you going to talk about that? Okay, there's one, there's one little nuance I just want you to know about.
So all of council right now is exempt until the new term. So they've given us a little bit of, uh, some breathing room for new council. So our current council is, or committee of management is not um, under these guidelines until your new term. So until after November fourteenth, I believe it is. So after November fourteenth, in your orientation, we'll be giving you letters and consent forms to sign to go to the OPP or, because there's different places you have to go, um, to obtain your police record check.
Yeah, we're going to try to make it as seamless as possible for the new council warden um, to, to do this. I was gonna, do you want me to talk about the dichotomy between their council role and the municipal act and this? Okay, so um, that's fine. Um, one of the things there's always unintended consequences with, with new regulations, new legislation that aren't necessarily thought through. One of the things that we put to the ministry, which we did not get um, a satisfactory answer on at all, um, is in the municipal act, for example, there's specific rules around who may be in office. It does not include um, a, a prohibition if you don't meet the test that Jessica's just described for being on the, on management. So if we are collectively the board of manage, not we, but if you are the board of management for the lodge, and one of you fails the test that she's just described, um, how does that work? We don't know how that works, because we've asked the ministry to think about that, and they haven't. If they have, they're not telling us what they think about it. And so that's unfortunate, because I don't think you're the only ones in this situation. Like, there's lots of councils that are the full board of management uh, for the lodge, and the two acts don't compute, like they haven't thought about municipal act whenever they created this new, uh, whatever it's called. Fixing law, fixing, fixing long-term, what a terrible name. But anyways, um, they didn't think about that. So if that happens, I don't know what we do. But we've asked a question, and hopefully it won't happen um, to us. And if it does happen, we'll figure it out at the time. We, Marcy and I have thought about some interim provisions in the case one person on new council doesn't pass the test. We could have a smaller committee and have a separate committee as an interim solution, but that would really be a terrible, you know, outcome. We wouldn't want that, because first of all, I think it would signify to everyone that we do have a problem around the horseshoe. And, and that's not what we want either. So we're trying to get the ministry to correct this what I see as a flaw between the two legislations um, before council term, but I wouldn't hold your breath on that as an outcome.
Okay, any other questions? If, if not, then I'm going to ask for a mover for the motion in front of us. Counselor, uh, Cunyason, seconded by Counselor Mayhew, all in favor? Uh, eleven B four, Strathmere Lodge Staff Educator Contract Renewal, and Brent, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Warden, through you to council. Um, this item has been before council on a number of previous occasions, but just to remind council, the lodge does uh, have uh, or has had a contracted staff educator in place since 2010. She continues to be invaluable to us in a number of different ways, notably um, fulfilling the onerous staff education requirements spelled out in our long-term care home legislation. Uh, but also filling, fulfilling other staff education requirements uh, in other legislation, such as uh, the Occupational Health and Safety Act, um, accessibility, accessibility for Ontario, Ontarians Disabilities Act. Um, the educators contract is up for renewal again. Uh, the proposed renewed contract now before council includes a four point seven percent increase in the hourly wage rate, uh, but a reduction in the weekly hours as requested by the educator. So the net of that is savings to the lodge of about 5,000 annually. Um, so I'm recommending the contract between the lodge and Lena Hodgins, the contracted staff educator be renewed for a one-year period, uh, September one, 2022 to August thirty first, 2023. And that I, as lodge administrator, be authorized to sign the agreement.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Brent, uh, Counselor DeVet?
Uh, thank you, through you to the administrator. Um, thank you for the report. I just have a question about do you foresee, expect that there might be any gaps because of the decrease in time or, or um, how does new content? I was just wondering if you're decreasing the amount of time, are there going to be issues or difficulties in your meeting any um, goals that you wish to have attained for your staff in terms of education?
Um, through the warden to the counselor. Um, Lena has been with us for twelve now, twelve years now, and uh, I think it's fair to say that she's got things down pat in terms of what needs to be done and, and um, what we need to do to fulfill the legislation. Um, since the renewed legislation um, came into effect April eleventh, as far as staff education is concerned, there hasn't been a whole lot of changes to that. Um, so I would say that um, given that Lena has has mastered what we need to do and has streamlined it to um, that we will be fine.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? If not, we've got a motion in front of us, looking for a mover. Um, that would be a Counselor Richard, seconded by Counselor Elliott, all in favor? So moved. Eleven B five, 2022, PSAB budget, and Cindy?
Uh, thanks. And through the warden, attached is the Net 2022 Public Sector Accounting Board, PSAB, or Full Accrual Budget. We are required to present the PSAB budget on an annual basis. There are a number of steps which are listed in the report that finance has to go through to take a tax rate budget or cash budget to a PSAB or a full accrual budget. For example, in step one, we have to remove the capital and add in the amortization expenses in step four. At this time, I'm recommending that the Net 2022 PSAB Full Accrual Budget required for the 2022 Financial Statement Purposes in the amount of forty six, seven oh two, oh sixty six be approved. Thanks, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Cindy? Nope. Okay, then I'm looking for a mover. Counselor Rob, seconded by Counselor Burkhart Justin, all in favor? So moved. Now we're going to go back to eight, which is the verbal update. I believe we have Adam on the screen with us. Welcome, Adam, and tell us all about your weekend.
Thank you, Warden. Um, and through you to council. Um, this weekend was what is, uh, has been come to known as FOCO. Uh, it is a student unsanctioned street event. And to provide a little bit of background, uh, it takes place on Bruffdale Ave. Uh, Bruffdale is a small 350-meter street that rests just south of the University of Western. Um, over the early years of 2010 through 2015, students would hold small parties um, that would take place on their lawns on the Saturday of the homecoming weekend. Occasionally, the crowds would tend to spill over into some of the sidewalks. Over the years, the smaller parties became quite large. Um, in 2015, more than 10,000 students filled the street, um, which is when it turned into an unsanctioned street event. Western tried several attempts to help mitigate um, the, the particular events, including moving homecoming into October. Um, this resulted in the students creating um, what they would refer to as fake homecoming or FOCO. The first FOCO event, um, actually uh, garnered a great deal of attention. Uh, there were a lot of crowds that attended, and we had students from Queens and the University of Waterloo that would rent buses and travel down to London for the event. In 2020, crowds began using some of, or sorry, 2021, some of the crowds started using the adjacent streets, including Huron Street. Um, and then we saw uh, additional crowds moving into um, Regent and St. George Streets. Detailed planning is completed over several months to create a joint emergency response plan to the event that helps ensure public safety, which also includes a great deal of planning from Western University and investing different alternatives that the university can do to help engage students to remain on campus and to help them behave responsibly. The annual unsanctioned street event continues to place tremendous strain on Middlesex and Paramedic Service, as well as our allied agencies. This past Saturday, we saw the next iteration of the event. Crowds were approximately 20,000 line the streets of Bruffdale Ave and Huron Street, as well as St. George Regent as well. Um, in the past years, the event would take place primarily during the daytime, in which resources from MLPs, LPS and London Fire, as well as the City of London and Western University, would all were jointly to ensure safety. By late afternoon, the streets would tend to clear, and students would disperse to their local bars or um, houses and potentially dorm parties. Over the last year and a, and a bit, uh, Middlesex and Paramedic Service, we have um, always been able to maintain our staffing and our planning for the nighttime for um, post FOCO. The exception we had in 2021 was a slight anomaly last year, where we saw the students moving on to Huron Street, and they tended to come back into the evenings. And that is what we were planning for this year, and that's um, what we saw. So this year's event unfolded as we had expected. Um, and due to the nature of the event, the crowd sizes, the complexity of the joint response, um, the Emergency Operations Center was activated for the event. A little bit of uh, statistics for the actual event during the 24-hour period, um, of uh, Saturday through the Sunday, Middlesex, London, and Paramedic Service, we responded to 510 calls system-wide. This represents a 55% increase over our call demand that we would normally and, or normally experience on a Saturday. Out of all of those calls, 76 calls can be directly related to the student unsanctioned street events. And of those calls that are directly related to the event, 45 calls actually took place in the area of Bruffdale and Huron Ave. We ended up transporting 28 patients. Um, six were deemed to be of serious nature, which is C T S two, and three patients were transported to the Children's Hospital. While the event was extremely busy and the streets were, were filled and quite chaotic, the response from uh, MLPs, the paramedics and the superintendents that were overseeing the event was phenomenal. They were able to interact and liaise with um, their allied agencies, and in all, it was an extremely successful event from the service's perspective. Um, the response was tremendous. We were able to respond to all the calls within the area, as well as having the resources in place to protect the nine-one-one system. That was the other issue that we wanted to make sure is that we were able to protect the calls that would be going on within the normal system and not have this particular event um, put any jeopardy to the, to the citizens that would normally be calling nine-one-one during that period. Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, Counselor Burkhart Justin, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, and through the warden, Adam, it's really not a question, but just more of a congratulations. Um, I mean, it's, it's funny to say, you know, congratulations on an event like this, but certainly from what you've reported, from what the media has accounted for, it was well-run from an emergency um, response um, standpoint. Um, you, you, you know, at the beginning of your report, uh, you, you spoke to the history of how it came to be. And certainly, I think, um, you know, uh, congratulations and kudos has to go to all that um, are involved, because your communication and approach to this event has certainly um, improved over the years. And there's no question, um, you know, Western uh, police, fire services, and of course, our MLPs are, are, are all working together, not only to keep um, you know, students and the residents in Bruffdale safe, but of course, then the region at large. So thanks for that report.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I don't think there's any other comments, so I'd like a motion to receive. All right. I don't think there's any other comments, so I'd like a motion to receive that verbal report for information. Counselor DeVee? Is that you moving it? Okay, second Counselor Burkhard Justin, all in favor? So thanks again, Adam, for stepping in at the last minute and information was great. Thank you.
Thank you, Warden.
Okay, now moving on to correspondence and information items, the first thing we have is eleven C one, which is electronic payments, August twenty twenty two totaling two million, three hundred and five, three hundred and forty nine point four nine. That it's not me paying it. So any questions about those? Nope, mover? Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Mayhew, all in favor? So moved. Now we have eleven C two, notice of public consultation period for Middlesex County, OPA number three. Okay, and we maybe we'll do, if there's not too many questions about these, we'll maybe do a bunch of them together, and then we'll pull out some other ones for for separate. So nobody has any comments about that. Eleven C three, the Home Program Evaluation Report, Year One. It's quite an interesting report, I thought. Eleven C four, we have a letter from the Ministry of Health dated September ninth, twenty twenty two. Then we have another letter from the Minister of Health, eleven C five. Eleven C six is the Middlesex County Accessibility Content Style and Design Guide and Middlesex County Creating Accessible Documents Guide. Is Sarah on the call? Okay. Oh, there she is. Welcome, Sarah. And if you want to just fill us in about this report, that would be great.
Thank you. Through the warden to members of council, I am presenting two guides that I have created with a focus on ensuring compliance with the Integrated Accessibility Standards Regulation requirements, specifically on web and document accessibility. So the first one is the Accessibility Content Style and Design Guide. This focuses on ensuring that all documents, social media posts and graphics use consistent and uniform styling such as font types, color contrast, headings, and so forth. The second one is the Creating Accessible Documents Guide. This focuses on providing step by step instructions on how to use accessibility trackers and fix accessibility issues so that we can ensure that all documents posted online for the public to view are in accessible format. The document accessibility requirements apply to all documents posted online after January first, twenty twelve. So I have been working on fixing the existing documents on our website. Of course, this is a quite time consuming process. I will be providing training to various county departments in the coming months, and I will also circulate our guides to the local municipal partners following this meeting and offer training on document accessibility. These guides are likely to be updated as new accessible document issues may be identified during training and as well as as the website continues to be updated. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions on these guides.
Okay, any questions for Sarah? Think it was a pretty explicit document.
Marcy? If I can just add one thing, so thank you to Sarah for all her work on these documents. So in addition to adding or outlining the AODA requirements for documents, it also incorporates our corporate branding under the communication strategy so that all of our documents that are created in-house kind of have the same look and feel. So we're really excited to get the training going.
Great, thank you. All right, thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Eleven C seven, Strathmere Lodge Census Report for August twenty twenty two. Brent, do you want to speak about that at all?
Not really, Warden. Occupancy is as usual, strong, and we're getting our full funding. Our short stay bed, our lone short stay bed is probably going to be opened up again shortly. And as council recall, it has been closed throughout the pandemic, but we're looking forward to being able to offer that service shortly.
Sure, that'll be a big relief for somebody out there. Counselor Vanderhayden, did you have a comment or a question?
Yes, if I could, through you to Brent, I I see that the numbers for the waitlist are just continue to climb. It just doesn't go down at all. And I I guess if I think about it, you know, we have an aging population and there's a huge need out there for this. And now that the province has made different regulations that they're using to take seniors that are in hospitals and put them in nursing homes, which we don't have a single bed available. Is there something that we need to start visioning down the road about how we we deal with these waitlists because we contend? There was over a hundred people on the waitlist, and that's 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 a lot.
Through the warden to Counselor Vanderhayden. Yes, certainly, there there is a huge demand and the province is trying to create some new builds and some some new long term care home beds. Seemingly always sort of behind the eight ball though in terms of meeting that demand.
I was talking to somebody in the hospital system yesterday, actually, and they said if they built a facility that had a thousand beds in it and they filled those beds, the next day there'd be a thousand more people that needed beds. So it just gives you a bit of an idea of the the scope of the problem that we're facing and and it's it's like it's a really big situation that we need to address. So thank you, Brent. The eleven C eight, the Budget Variance Report. Cindy, anything that you want to add to that?
Thanks through the warden. So this budget report goes until August. At this point, we are tracking within budget. However, of course, we have a couple of areas highlighted in regards to we have land ambulance where we're kind of watching that with their offload delays and other pressures we have there. We also have highlighted issues maybe in our transportation, just watching inflation and the cost of consumable supplies. We also are dealing with COVID nineteen and the impacts of that, but luckily, we've been getting funding for our long term care home and our land ambulance as well. So at this point, everything is good, but we are keeping watch on a couple of items and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Cindy? No. All right, eleven C nine, the County Official Plan Amendment Number Three, the Ministry Suspension of the Review Timeline. Oh, sorry, Counselor Rob, did you have a question?
Through the warden, that's all right. I could have waited and asked her after the meeting as well. But I think my question is probably more to Chris on that on the transportation part, too. Due to the, it's such a sharp increase on the cost of paving that was even higher than the course was expected. Do you see that affecting our our biking, you know, plan going forward for the next little bit? Or do we have to cut back a little bit? That's going to be a challenging one for us, is it not?
Well, through the the war and accounts to Rob, it it doesn't really have. It's challenging for us with regards to when we see these sharp spikes in oil prices, which naturally affect the cost of asphalt cement. Just for council's knowledge, the asphalt price in August had jumped from nine hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents a ton when we tendered the contract to thirteen hundred eighty dollars a ton. So pretty significant increase. So basically, the we've had years where we've saved money on that and put money back in reserves this year. We're going to need to take money out of capital reserves for roads to make up the shortfall. It would be difficult for us to change a contract mid season, once it's been awarded. The the amount of asphalt that's required to pave our paved shoulders for active transportation purposes would, if we cut that, it'd be a significant change in the contract quantities we'd be in 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 a contract breach, we'd have some penalties against us for reducing the quantity by that much. So we'll go through this year. We have healthy reserves. They're there for that reason for us to make up for those shortfalls when we have tendered projects come back and things come out of our control. As far as next year goes, I I think there'll be some interesting discussions at budget time because of costs across the board. Just simply the cost of doing business post COVID certainly hasn't reverted back to where we had expected. So we're expecting to have additional costs with regards to operating our fleet as well as costs with doing any of our capital projects, whether it be bridges, whether it's purchasing vehicles or the the main body of our cap work, which is paving. So it's hard to have a crystal ball on this to see if the prices come back down any significant amount. But right now, the industry is saying we're likely going to see this sort of level off. It may drop a little bit, but won't get back down to that sub one thousand dollars a ton mark. So again, tougher question to talk about without getting into sort of a more broad capital budgeting discussion.
Okay, thank you. Now Dirk, back to you. And we're going to talk about this Ministry Suspension of the Review Timeline. It's not your fault, Dirk. We know that.
I was I wasn't sure where that was going, but I'll just, I'll be be brief. You've had a chance to read the report, but you know that Amendment Number Three to your official plan was adopted and submitted to the ministry as the approval authority, much the same way that you're the approval authority for local official plans. The Plan Act sets out a hundred and twenty days for the minister to make a decision. And I'm perhaps too much of an optimist. I was hopeful that it would actually be shorter than that because we've involved the ministry upfront, the the London Office a lot. So I I kind of thought we were in in good position. But we did receive a letter from Minister Clark that they've suspended the hundred and twenty day review time period, and they haven't indicated why or for how long, so it's sort of open ended, if you will. I didn't, when Marcy sent that to me at night, I shouldn't read my email always. I didn't sleep particularly well that night. I felt better the next day. I started calling other counties, and it seems like they've done this to everybody that is an upper tier. So the province has suspended those timeframes. So it's not just us, if that makes makes me feel better. Having said that, there are a couple of implications. So there are things that that you want to change and that local municipalities want to change that are basically on pause. And I would use the, I think a good example is the nineteen ninety nine surplus dwelling consents. We've moved that our councils looking to make that change to it must be ten years old. Well, that's on pause until a minister makes a decision. And then there is this cascading implication for official plan amendments, especially for the municipalities that have done those larger update OPAs. So the way the the hierarchy of the Plan Act is structured, County Council really can't approve an official plan, a local official plan unless it's consistent with the PPS and it conforms with the county's official plan that's been approved by the minister. So we're in this position where we know that what OPA three says, local municipalities are making amendments that reflect that. But you won't really be in a position to approve those amendments until the minister makes a decision. So we're in a little bit of a a pickle, if you will. There are areas in the local official plans, and I need to sit down. I've been talking to each CEO about this. I need to sit down and and think a bit about how this will work. There are some areas that can be approved that don't rely expressly on Amendment Number Three in local official plans. So I just need to start looking at that. So it may be a case where we'll have to do partial approvals for components of official plan amendments and then leave the rest or defer the rest until the minister makes a decision and then sort of see what that decision looks like, too.
They had one job to do. Counselor DeVee?
I just want to thank Dirk for that explanation. That was my question. I wanted to know is the whole thing on hold or are there pieces that aren't necessarily affected? So I appreciate you taking time to go through that detail and clarifying that for us. Fingers crossed.
Counselor Vanderhayden?
It's always interesting to me when we get all these new rules or regulations put down to our order of government and then the order of government that's giving us all these rules and regulations has a little clause in there that they can do whatever the heck they want on their own timeline. So very interesting. That being said, there must be a reason, but in none of this documentation is there a reason given? So I'm wondering, was it a timing thing? Was it like, was there? Was there any concept of why this was stopped? Because that's that's their job to do this, and they get it, and they they can't get it done. Was it was it because of the election they just had? So there was a timing piece in there or? I I'm I don't know. Is there any indication? Because, you know, we we we're all working to put in attainable affordable housing and and changing the way we we do backyard, you know, surplus dwellings, not even surplus dwellings, but you know, changing your units into a granny suite, et cetera. Well, are all these things now on hold till till someone there decides that they can that we actually may do this? Like, it just gets very complicated. I mean, I'm answering these questions daily right now about housing, et cetera, et cetera. And if if we've gone to the next step of doing the right thing, and then we get thrown back, that that's a problem.
And before you answer that, I also want to add, maybe you could discuss the public meeting notification that we just received there as well.
Madam Warren, you you lost me on the public meeting notification.
I'll help, I'll help.
I didn't mean to lose you, but did you want to respond to Counselor Vanderhayden? Then we'll move on to the other topic.
Certainly through the ward. In terms of, there there is no reason given in the letter or elsewhere, and I've called and asked, and and they haven't been able to provide a a particular reason. They certainly do have a high workload because there's been so many provincial changes. Municipalities across the province are are we're implementing what they've asked us to do. And so I I can appreciate they have a lot of work to do, but it is, you know, an outcome of the direction that they've given. So I I don't know if that's the reason or if there are other reasons why.
It's too bad we can't make them pay a penalty for every day that our our official plan gets held up because that's what's going to happen to us eventually. But CEO Rayburn, did you want to take that discussion on the public meetings?
Sure. So Dirk, there was a letter that came out yesterday from Minister Clark in regard to public consultations. I don't know if you got copied on it or not. So that's probably, so maybe we'll save it for the next meeting. Basically, it's in it. It's it clarifies the requirements for public consultation where there was a a question out about whether or not you need to have a a physical in person meeting plus electronic or whether one of each either would suffice. And the minister clarified to say either would suffice, and he also, in his letter, went on to further clarify the definition of electronic meeting, and it's very broad, including a webinar, which is a one sided consultation. So that's that's a real advancement in terms of a change, a real change in process, I would say, from the way we do things now. But it is a clarification. So we'll we'll have to think through what the implications of that are for future meetings because that is well beyond, I think, where we are currently.
I think the implications are it's one step further away from the people, right? And Counselor Smith?
If I could, through the warden, just to piggyback on what Counselor Vanderhayden was saying with the frustration of having updated through updates from the provincial government, whether that's through whatever bill that it is or through the updated provincial policy statement. And a good example of that is in Allee Metcalf, we've had somebody doing temporary use agreements for a secondary suite on their property for a number of years. And they just came back to council just this past month. And we had to, again, extend that temporary use, even though if these policies that are coming down from the province, if we could just implement them right away, because we legally have to, it'd be a, the the process would be a lot easier to deal with. I'm just going back to a comment that Dirk made about, say, the surplus farm drilling severances and that date of January first, nineteen ninety nine. Something that we did in Allee Metcalf, when we updated our official plan to filing allow surplus farming severances and is instead of actually using that date that the county has, which is that January first, nineteen ninety nine. We simply just put that the dwelling was built prior to the timeframe specified by the county Middlesex Official Plan. So those are the types of things that when you're looking at your official plan updates in the future is instead of just duplicating and saying the same date or the same size or whatever it is that we're implementing here at the county. Don't take that date or don't say ten years, just specifically say whatever the county is doing, we're going to do it, too. Because if you don't do that, then you're going to be delaying your up those changes at your lower tier that much longer because then you have to update your official plan as well, and that all takes time as we know.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. So I have a motion here that items eleven C two to eleven C nine be received for information. Mover? Counselor Rob, seconded by Counselor Richards, all in favor? So moved. Any inquiries? New business? So now we're going into closed session thirteen A and we aren't going into closed session? We're going to defer it. Sorry. Things change rapidly up here. So I think we are going to ask council's permission to defer this, which means you'll be out fairly shortly if we do that. So I'm looking for a mover. Thank you, Counselor Vanderhayden, seconded by Counselor Elliott, all in favor? And now we are going to two ten, rise from while we're not in closed sessions, we don't have to worry about that, but we can do it from committee. Yeah. Not going to go by my notes anymore, just my gut. And so now I'm looking for a mover for that. Somebody move? Yep, Richard, seconded by Vanderhayden, all in favor? Hey, don't forget your invitation to the Warden's banquet will be coming shortly. And then I now a motion to adjourn. Counselor Smith, second.